This meeting is being recorded.
Hello, everyone. Let's call to order the work session for the Clark County Commission on Aging. My name is Franklin Johnson, the Chair. Let's begin with our go-around question that we're going to ask all of the commission members. And the question basically is, what community organization or agency supporting older adults have you relied on for yourself, a friend, or a family member? And let's start with Larry.
Well, I, yeah, Larry Smith. I work with an organization called CMAC, Community Military Appreciation Committee. And it's been in existence, and I'm one of the individuals who founded it. And what it does is it reaches out and does events for veterans and military personnel in the community. That used to be done by the military when they used to be at the barracks. And they moved out, so we created a nonprofit organization of about forty folks. And it's kind of neat to reach into that organization because you have a variety of different folks you're working with. One of the things that's coming up is we have Veterans Day Parade, and we helped plan that parade with the National Park Service and the Historic Trust. And there's a lot of folks that we don't want to forget in that organization because we're losing a generation of World War II folks. And I don't think we can ever, ever thank them enough for their contributions to this country. Every time I read a book and so forth, I'm just amazed at the sacrifices made, not only by the ones in the service, but by the families, the women who worked in the mills and factories and so forth to make that happen. So we're trying our best to make sure that these seniors, because many of them now are in their nineties, that are not forgotten, and making sure that they're involved in the parade coming up. And we will have probably a gather of seniors, World War II, that will march and be in the trucks and so forth for the parade. So it's kind of exciting to look at, to make sure, because as I said, we're down, losing most of these individuals. So that's exciting, it's a place to go, and it's always interesting to sit down with them, even though my dad told me a lot of stories because he's a World War II guy, to listen to some of these guys and gals tell about the stories that occurred during the forties and during the war.
Thank you, Larry. And just a quick reminder that this is a hybrid meeting. And remember to keep your microphones muted when you're not speaking. For those in the room, you need to press the button on your microphone to speak and press it again to mute. The light at the bottom of the mic turns green when unmuted and red when muted when you speak. We also request that you, when you turn your mic on, you state your name so that everyone can track who's speaking. Now, let's go ahead and go to Justin. Did you get the question? Okay.
I see the question. Yeah, this is Justin Ross. As far as relying on organizations for myself, not much. We've participated in Meals on Wheels in the past. And that's about it, as far as, other than that, like hospice. Things I've been involved with personally. So I'm just now getting familiar with a lot of these organizations that are out there. I just spent the early part of this afternoon in the Aging and Disabilities, their monthly meeting, their advisory board. So I got a whole bunch of notes and hear from that to share with you guys later. I can't say that I have a whole lot of experience with these other organizations personally.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Donna, would you like to go ahead and share your background with any community organizations or agencies that support older adults?
I've actually been thinking about this, and there really haven't been. I know for both elderly aunt, my parents, who are in Arizona, Oregon, it's really been person to person, same with my husband, there really hasn't been an agency. The closest, in the case of my husband or I would be, are church community. But otherwise, there just hasn't been any.
Okay, thank you. That was Donna Mason. Next, Dick Clermont?
Yes, Dick Clermont. And I'm getting a little echo in my headphones here. Let me take those off for a minute. But I've participated in Meals on Wheels and school backpack programs that I think help older adults, well, they help the whole family, actually, in providing food. And the sheriff's department with the Sheriff's Auxiliary and the Call Program to call people who would like to be called or checked on, need to be checked on periodically. And also the answering calls to citizens, non-threatening calls, the citizens end of it, I guess, like the NOW program. And other than that, history goes back a long time with me and several of us, I guess, and all the way back to things like emergency intervention programs in the past in different places, different cities. That pretty well takes care of it.
Thank you, Dick. Mel?
Mel Funches. I would have to say, other than the Commission on Aging, it would be the individual hospices, going back to my late wife's aunt, who was in Salt Lake, was not taken care of, and then was taken to Las Vegas, where there was a lot of family. Then later on, my dad was in a hospice home. He passed away about two years ago. And right now, I have an aunt who is in a hospice in Southern California, now she's in Northern California. So, yeah, I would have to say the individual hospices, and then I'm working with the Magnolia Square Senior Apartments, not a hospice, but, yeah, it would be individual places like that. Other than that, I really haven't dealt with agencies.
Thank you, Mel.
Hi, all, this is Cass Friedland. I would say, actually, it's been ADSWA quite a bit. Living in a large fifty-five-plus community, I've contacted ADSWA a couple of times quietly on behalf of folks who are in distress. And although I am not part of the family, I do, I can play a role in linking folks who are closer to them with a great deal of information. And ADSWA's been superb doing that, so that's what I've done.
Thank you, Cass. I'm Franklin Johnson, and most of my experience was both with hospice for various family members and back when my mother was alive, I had a lot of experience trying to locate and deal with elder care facilities. And even got to the point where I was able to locate some private homes where they would take care of just two or three people at a time. And they made a special effort to provide them with the kind of diet and other cultural aspects that they were comfortable with, so that was really kind of educational. Other than that, most of my experience with services for older adults has come through this Commission on Aging. There's so many programs and services available that I just wasn't fully aware of until I got involved with the agency. So I think that there's really important work that ADSWA and the agency is doing to keep that information out there for those people who know about it. So thank you all for sharing your experiences with those kinds of services. We now need to review the July nineteenth meeting notes. Are there any changes to those? Hearing no changes, then. Unless anybody else has a comment, then let's go ahead and move forward to our twenty-three, twenty-four work plan schedule.
Okay. Can you all hear me? Does that work? Okay. So this is Jenna, and I wanted to give a quick update on where we're at with the work plan and schedule, both for the rest of this year and going into next year. And then my main question for you will be about our plans for next year, and if you have any guidance for staff on direction or, you know, help us figure out if we're on the right path to organizing what you all want for next year. But I'll start with this document that we shared with you all. I'll just recap where we're at for the rest of this year to start. So as you all know by now, our, the group's focus for the rest of the year is on community engagement. And we've identified two strategies in the, from the draft updated Aging Readiness Plan that seem to align well with this focus area. And your next meeting later today, Cass will be moderating the discussion, and you'll really start getting into what this means and how might you partner with the Area Agency on Aging and so forth. So a lot more to come on what this means. But in terms of your schedule, so today is your August meeting, and you have Christina Marnarez with the Area Agency on Aging. She'll be a guest joining you during your regular meeting. And then in September, we have been contacting some of the folks who work in the Portland metro area who also have some sort of aging action plan and have been working on this idea of community engagement to see if they can share a few examples of what's been working for them or not working for them to help inform your work. So so far, we have confirmed Alan de Latour. He is with the City of Portland and used to work at Portland State. So he is scheduled for September, and we may have someone else, but that's still to be determined. And then for October, we are looking at inviting guests from further outside, either somewhere else in the state or in the country, to share examples that might be relevant to your priority strategies as well. And then in November, and this will make more sense probably after today's later meeting, assuming you all decide that you want some subcommittees to do some work in between meetings, we're holding November as the time where they would be sharing back some draft versions of the work that they are working on over the next few months. And then December, we have scheduled to take off. And then January of 2024 will be, you have an annual meeting with the county council. So that's what the next several months are starting to look like. And again, I think the later meeting today, I think, will help add a lot more to that explanation. Okay, so looking to next year, 2024, and based on the conversation you all had at the retreat, you all identified emergency preparedness as your focus area for next year. And what we have here is, it's a very rough starting outline of maybe how you could organize your work next year around this topic. So we've listed six strategies that we found in the updated Aging Readiness Plan that seem to align well with what you all were talking about in your small groups during the retreat. And I'm thinking, you know, we want your feedback if these sound good, or if you'd like us to look at other strategies in the plan to pull out related to the topic. So that's one question. And we envision, you know, once you have some time to talk about this more, you might identify some deliverables on things or clear actions that you might do to help move these strategies forward. And then your meetings, you know, could be a combination of, you could invite people to speak to you if you think that would be helpful to learn more about a topic related to a strategy. You could also have meetings that, the meeting themselves could be moving a strategy forward. You could do a training with CRESSA on emergency preparedness for older adults, or something along those lines. Anyway, so we're envisioning a conversation of, a combination of talking with other people. And you all may be hosting some events with also possibly some subcommittee work if you, if that makes sense, based on what you want to accomplish. So I think that's the, that is the high-level summary of what we've got so far for next year. And I think our main question for the group is, how does this sound? And do you have any other direction for Susan and I as we try to start mapping out and scheduling with other people?
Thank you, Jenna. Let's have some discussion about the plan proposed, and any thoughts on that?
Dick Clermont. And I think what's been done on the plan is tremendous. All of those things, I'm having a hard time talking with that on. Let's try it this way. All of those topics are very real and very much in need, I think, in times of disaster. In my own thinking as I went through there, and I've read it a couple of times, the, one of the things that occurred to me was that it seems to, it focuses on mass events more than anything, of course, that's its design. And I was wondering if there is room to perhaps to include something more individualized for people. I mean, as one of the, as one of the goals, I believe, for the organization, for the commission is to, and county, is to find ways to allow people to stay in their homes. And there are a lot of reasons for them not staying there. Without getting really long-winded on this, which I'm quite capable of, the, some of the, some of the topics I was thinking about were the personal, the personal safety of people, the things that all of us probably have heard, all of the things that we should know, but many of the things that we forget and don't pay attention to. For, for people with disabilities, there are a lot of things that are involved in personal safety, such as, you know, I have my own, my own list of prime candidates, and one is postal mailboxes on a sidewalk, for people in wheelchairs or people who are blind, traffic issues of all sorts, from crosswalks to enforcement. And things like graffiti. And graffiti, you think, isn't necessarily a personal threat to someone, but it colors what they think of their own neighborhood, it colors what they think of the people around them, it provides fear of gang infiltration and all sorts of, you know, almost anything you can conjure up, which also is a detriment to people staying in their homes as they get older and they're alone, particularly if they're alone. I'm blessed with a large army of people in our family, but, you know, I can't, I can't even imagine being alone and trying to keep up with all of that, sidewalks and, you know, brush sticking out over sidewalks and all the things you can't see and the things you can't get around. So there are, there are a lot of aspects to that that go far beyond there, but I was just wondering if anyone had any thoughts on some way to include it, or perhaps to make it a future project, or any thoughts, whatever. Thank you.
May I speak to that? One of the things that I loved about the plan, when I saw the original and as I hear about the updates, is the concept of bringing people together and not to do it for them, but to create an environment to be able to facilitate, if you will. And it's curious, because I wrote an article recently that had to do with leadership, had nothing to do with this directly, sorry, this is Kenland, but it strikes me as if we as individuals take the first step, and if we as an organization or a group create an environment to facilitate that, seems to me that the sharing of resources might be more readily available. So I love that about the plan, that its focus isn't that we can do everything for everybody, but that we can help create a platform or an environment for people to share. And I can tell you, Dick, that I know since joining this group, I've been more conscious of what's going on around in my own community, because I live where they've built four retirement communities in the last five or seven years. And it's interesting, because as I start to talk to the residents about it, which I wasn't doing six months ago, even though I've been in the industry for forty years, two things, two observations, just the raising of awareness. So now as I'm walking by, I'm making eye contact, I'm saying, hi, how are you? I'm picking up trash on my return trip on my walks, things like that. There's instantly a greater sense of community, and it wasn't necessarily this group that created that, but this group created that awareness, if that makes any sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Just to make a comment about the community. It's a, it's something that I'm very proud of the City of Vancouver, what they have done. I've, I don't think many of you go to the concerts. The city's had six concerts on the waterfront, and then six at the Columbia Tech Center. I've been to them all. One of the things that really stands out, and I've had people mention to me, is just what you said, it brings the community together. When you can see kids out there having a good time, you see seniors, and they're just, I mean, there's seniors all over that place. Seniors really gravitate to those types of events, and they're out there, they're dancing, they're having a good time and so forth. How valuable that is. And many of the retirement centers are now running buses to these events, so they take the seniors there because the word has gotten out and said, hey, this is, this is fun. And you're around different types, the diversity of people there, the age levels, that brings people together. And the more we do that, the more we appreciate and understand people's different viewpoints, as well as their, their love of life and so forth.
Would you agree it also starts to mitigate the fear and the apprehension, because you're getting out, you're engaging, those types of things?
Yeah, yeah. Say that one more time.
Well, I just, I just said, would you agree that the fact that people are starting to get out more, it's mitigating the level of fear and anxiety that goes with the unknown?
And I wanted to mention that I think is so important, and I'm going with my own experience with my retirement center, is getting people, the city and the first of nine October, or the first of October, will be open up the Red Vine, land you thirty-six stops, and trying to get more and more seniors out to use that public transportation. That's an asset. A lot of them are a little bit afraid because of the COVID scare, but a lot of it comes back, unfortunately, and I think it's going to get better, is the safety. People are a little bit afraid to get out there because of the, some of the violence that has taken place. But we're building these transportation systems. This is a multimillion-dollar system that's running along Mill Plain. And it's thirty-six stops where you can take seniors where they want to go and so forth without them being dependent upon their relatives and so forth picking up, which is very difficult. But trying to encourage that, and again, that's a combination of working with law enforcement, the city, to make sure there's adequate security where people feel comfortable. But you're right, people want to get out, and the retirement center, and they'll flood the gates, they're trying to get out the door, because they're getting tired of watching TV, getting depressed watching that. They want to get out and be around people. And that's why I say the concerts are really fantastic, because you learn to appreciate people a bit more, and people talking to one another and saying hello, so it's just fabulous.
This is Donna, and I have a couple of things. Most of them probably sit under the umbrella of communication outreach, but one is the situation we have here in our community right now, which I don't know if people saw the article this morning, but it's one thing to have cooling centers that people don't know about them, they don't know how to get there, and particularly for elderly people, coupled with elderly people not having someplace to go or having air conditioning at night. And so, again, that's a good effort to have the cooling centers, but people, A, say they either didn't know or couldn't get there, similar situation that happened in Maui that could easily happen here, where a lot of the notifications, there wasn't a system in place to get word to elderly people quickly on the evacuation and making sure that people were moving, which also relates to, by great passion, companion animals, because particularly in those situations, or same with the cooling centers, people don't want to leave their animals. And one of the cooling centers here that encourage people to bring animals, and one resource we might want to connect with, and maybe in one of these, a couple of these presentations I thought might work, is, as I mentioned, the Humane Society for Southwest Washington is developing, and it's had in place for a while, but it's getting bigger, of working with elderly and reaching out, one, to provide care for animals when people are hospitalized or in rehab and they don't have anybody to take care of their pets. Also a program to be in place to make sure that your companion animal is adopted and cared for after you pass away. And also, just as part of the homeless and a lot of these other areas, people don't want to leave their animals, and in fact, to get the services they need. And in fact, the human, or the Humane Society is working with those groups to make that connection, to make sure that the Humane Society can help provide care for the animal along with making sure the pupil gets the services. And advanced notice, breaking news, starting this fall, the Humane Society is going to have a traveling mobile clinic with a focus on low-income and seniors to care. So again, those all things work together, and particularly for people who are living alone, their companion animal is their main contact and joy of living. And so we want to keep that bond in place whenever we can.
Thank you, Donna, Ken, and Larry. Any other comments?
Dick Clermont, here, and I would just like to, just as a point of clarification, I really wasn't looking at, I guess I should have expressed that a little more clearly, I wasn't looking at programs directed at an individual, really. It was more like that there be a, a system or a consideration, I guess, of those things. And, you know, some, some things that are dealt with, with zoning, some things that are dealt with, other meanings as well, just overall, let's say, traffic enforcement, for example, not, not talking about a call-in program for a speeder or anything like that. So not, not individuals in the sense of holding individual hands, because there's not, there are certainly not the resources for that, even if there was the desire for it. So, you know, I agree with that program. Thanks for, for the comment.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Justin Ross. I just want to say that, I mean, every, all the input that everybody has here is always, you know, very valuable and relevant, and then everyone's out here in the community reflecting on the things that they And then everyone's out here in the community reflecting on the things that they see, their personal experiences, and bringing them to here for, to be presented, talked about, hopefully implemented. Here we were talking about the outline for the 2024 work plan. And this says, first line, it says focus, emergency preparedness, right? And I think this list was put together, work plan, based upon previous conversations of things that we wanted to focus on to be specific about emergency preparedness. And I understand, Dick has mentioned before, some of the things about personal emergencies and, you know, the fear base. And I see those things out in the community. I'm, I cover more ground in this community than probably anybody here does. I drive this place all over. And I see what's happening on the streets. I see the unsafe places that's happening in front of my business as well. I have employees that are, females that are afraid to, you know, get out of their cars sometimes when they pull into the parking lot because there's someone who's, you know, homeless and has their car parked there and has two of their friends and they're going through their junk or whatever it might be, and it makes people uncomfortable. That's just a small example of what's out there all over the place. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is that there's a lot of rabbit holes we can get involved in on this. But I think that for us to be effective, we really need to try to be focused on what the plan that's been set forth is and really kind of drill down those topics. My suggestion, at least.
Thanks, Justin. You kind of hit on one of the, one of the real concerns is how and to what extent, or whether even, that we address this issue in the plan that's in its basically final draft stages. So any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I do. I have thoughts on that. I think it, very much those things are very, I mean, Donna brought up about cooling centers. I mean, I heard a story earlier today when I was at Ad Swa, as we call it, that, that, uh, that meeting, that was eye-opening. Talked about a fire hose of information. So, and one of the stories, the one of the ladies from one of the, one of the other counties was mentioning was how they have an elderly man that, you know, was getting evicted and he had a scooter thing and his dog, he had a big dog, and they were trying to rehome him, but didn't want to leave his dogs, they couldn't find a place for him to go. So then he started going to a hotel and paying daily rate at a hotel until he ran out of money. And then eventually the dog went away and they don't know how and now they don't know if they can get him into a facility because now he's fallen off the edge. And just talks about how many elderly are falling homeless right now. I mean, Larry mentioned the other day, last meeting, about the massive increase at the food bank where the, the numbers are twofold. And that was confirmed today in this other meeting that they're seeing that in all the organizations throughout. So these are all things that, I mean, emergencies, what are we going to classify as an emergency? Because all the elderly becoming homeless is definitely an emergency that may, is more immediate maybe than supersedes some of the ones we did plan for. So I think there's definitely things we should talk about and clarify and define what scope or how big our emergency preparedness covers and what things are outside of that, you know, and another topic, maybe. Good for thought.
Thank you for your comment. This is a significant issue. And I think what we really need to focus on is, is to what extent and how do we address that in the existing plan? And how do we weave that into our work plan going forward? So we'll probably have to come back to that and have some more dialogue on that. If I may, let me just move on to another agenda topic. And we can come back to this if we have some more time. We've had two requests for letters of support. And one of them comes from Chuck Green, who was a, just a recently departed member of the commission and is now Director of Public Works in Ridgefield. And the city of Ridgefield is in the process of putting together a planning grant application for Federal Reconnecting Communities Program. And their grant will fund an ADA Transition and Mobility Access Plan, which will consist of inventorying public streets for gaps and barriers to mobility for those with physical disabilities and developing a prioritized list of projects and a funding strategy to overcome these. And as part of that plan, they want to include recommendations from the Aging Readiness Plan and its update of the mobility and access to parks, transit, healthy foods for older adults in the city and to incorporate projects in this ADA transition. I've taken a look at this request. And to be honest, I really kind of started to scrutinize it from almost a negative position since Chuck was a recent member of the commission to make sure there weren't any issues of conflict of interest. And to this extent in my review, I haven't found any. Has anyone else looked at these or have any comments?
Yes. You know, my special project, I would like to see us do a letter of support to the city of, to the City Council of Battleground because they are going to extend that one sidewalk so that people from the senior apartments can have access to Walmart and the other facilities there to thank them for what they've done, but also to make sure that they continue with their actions and don't let it fall by the wayside.
Thank you, Mel. I wanted to just focus on each of these requests. And then if they're, if you think there's a, you know, an appropriate request to come from the city of Battleground, once they make that request, then we'll consider that, whether to endorse that letter or not. But I want to go ahead and look at any, you know, feedback or comments on this particular request before we go on to the next one. Anyone else have any comments? Cass?
Yeah, I had a chance to read it also beforehand. And I think it's really important, if they're going to start to do this work, where they're going to find gaps, as they said, they have to inventory and assess everything. So this seems like a really important starting ground to be able to engage in doing a transportation system that's accessible to all. So I certainly think it's well within our mission.
Thank you, Cass. Any other comments on, on this particular letter of request from Ridgefield?
Yes, I don't see, Justin Ross, I don't see why we wouldn't support that. Doesn't seem like a deep dive topic, like for all, it completely embodies the purpose that we're here and what we're, one of the many things that we're trying to do. And I'm sure this gentleman knows that considering he was on this panel before.
Thank you, Justin. So to close off this portion of the discussion, is everyone, well, let me ask you this. Who's in favor of going forward with a letter of support for this particular project in Ridgefield?
Hey Franklin, this is Jenna. You all will need to formally vote at your next meeting. So I would suggest maybe you pause here and then at your next meeting you can ask the group to vote as opposed to sort of pre-voting now.
Thank you. Yeah, we also have a second letter of request from the Felida Park Senior Housing Project. And this is a request for a letter of support for the Felida Park Senior Housing Pace Project. It's going to involve SHI, who has, has built a number of specialized housing projects in 16 counties in Oregon. And now they're going to be doing some work for Felida. They have purchased two acres of land in the Felida neighborhood of Vancouver, Washington. And they're looking to develop a 65-unit low-income senior housing project. It also includes commercial space dedicated to the development of service enrichment. They have conducted due diligence with dozens of community-based groups over the past two years that clearly identifies this program as an all-inclusive care for the elderly. Also looked very closely at this. And before we discuss any further, are there any other comments on this particular letter of request for the Felida? Is that correct, Felida or Felida? Felida, excuse me. The Felida Park Senior Housing Request. Any comments?
Yeah, Jenna, have we received letters before like this? Seems like we have.
It's been a few years since we've had a request. But the commission has provided letters of support for various grant applications or funding opportunities in the past to nonprofits. And I will highlight this is a nonprofit developer. But it's been a while. But we are following the commission's letter of support policy procedures. So it does seem to fit within, within that.
Thank you, Jenna. Any other comment?
Do we happen to know how the neighborhood has responded to this?
I'm not sure we know off the top of our heads, but the process, if you read the letter, they outline the public process they've been through. So they have had, I think it's at least one, maybe more than one, public hearing. So they, they have done the outreach and there has been an opportunity for neighbors to weigh in. Susan and I could probably find out more from the staff involved, but yeah.
And I think they also have, oh, this is Cass. I think they also have, I think I had also seen in there quite a bit of support already from, from Ad Swa. I don't know where that was down on the letter there. But they had already quite a few folks who had been providing letters of support. That was pretty impressive. Let's see where that is. There it is, from County Health, from Dr. Melnick, Director of Clark County Department of Community Services, from Ad Swa, and from Senator Cleveland.
Yeah, they've also had communications with the Felida Park Neighborhood Association. Any other comments? Okay, let's go ahead and move on. And we'll take those issues up in our formal meeting to vote on that. But based on, on the review so far, they fall within the guidelines of the letters of support policy that was just recently updated. So I think there's no reason for us to not endorse those, but we'll go ahead and take a formal vote in our next meeting.
Excuse me, Franklin, those letters, have they gone through a neighborhood association? Some of those neighborhood associations, I think, are recognized, at least in the city, the neighborhood associations are recognized by the city council. And I'm not sure of the status in Clark County. But I'm just wondering what their involvement is in this. And are they, you know, consulted or what?
Yeah, so I did just see the section of the letter where they summarized that they have been in contact with the Felida Park Neighborhood Association. And it seems, and the neighborhood associations are contacted as part of the, their hearing process for getting the, going through the development review for what they're proposing. And it does say neighborhood opposition to the project has been limited due to their strong outreach. So because this is a, it's partly a development project, it's been going through the county's public process, which does include outreach to the neighborhoods. In terms of the city of Ridgefield one, it's a little bit different. That's a, you know, staff is in the process of starting a project. I am not aware of the extent of neighborhood outreach yet.
And Ridgefield is basically just to support their package, their grant package that they're putting in for a request? Any other comments? Okay, let's move on. We're going to get some pointers now for participating in county legislative process for the Aging Readiness Plan.
Okay. I just wanted to remind everyone that the Planning Commission hearing for the Aging Readiness Plan is tomorrow evening on the 17th. And the commission, county council is coming up on September 26th. And just give you some thoughts on, some things you should think about if you'd like to testify at either of those hearings. So tomorrow's hearing will be in this room at 6:30 in the evening. You can attend either virtually or in person. And they, we will start with a presentation by staff. And then there'll be time for the planning commissioners to ask questions. And then they'll open up a public testimony process. And everyone will be given three minutes to testify. And we generally recommend in the, you'll hear in the discussion that you don't repeat testimony, that it, they just try to, you know, shorten the process and, and they don't need to hear the same testimony from everyone. But if you agree with someone else, you can mention that you support their comments. And I think the most important thing is to let them know what action that you're hoping that they'll take. So if you would like them to see the Aging Readiness Plan approved or denied, or if there's a section that you think needs modification, definitely mention that. And then sometimes the planning commission members might have a question for you. But generally, it's just the three minutes of testimony and then they'll move on. And the county council hearing is September 26th at 10:00 a.m. And that will also be in this room. And one thing I, this applies to both the planning commission and the county council. There will be a court reporter for both of the hearings. And so it's important to speak slowly and make sure that she can get all of your comments. And I don't think there's really any differences with the county council. They're a little bit more formal than the planning commission is. But pretty much the same process, the three-minute testimony. And they will actually, they have a lot of people who testify frequently. And so they will make, they will cut people off at the end of the three minutes. So just be prepared to keep your comments within that timeframe. So.
What time is the commission meeting?
Yeah, so the planning commission tomorrow night is at 6:30. And the council meeting is at 10:00 a.m.
This is Ken. With regard to testifying and circling back to our first meeting, one of the things that we talked about was, my words, not the group's words, a unified approach to how we communicate in public. So do we have an intent, since we have our forum to discuss it, to have a voice? Or are we going to randomly allow people to testify? I'm just looking for clarity.
Thank you, Ken. That's a good point. I think to the extent possible, if we're going, if, you know, if we're going to go and make testimony, I think we should try and make sure we're not repeating ourselves and that we are in a unified posture. Any other, any other comments or thoughts?
I agree with you 100%. To Justin Ross, I agree with you in that statement that, yeah, good point, Ken. And I think we should have some version of a unified approach to that, someone who present our viewpoints or to the council instead of everybody showing up and paying from every angle, like she said, repeating ourselves, you know, they probably won't take nice to that.
Or, you know, this is, this one's pretty straightforward, but there may come a time when we have differences. But it seems to me this is the place where we work out differences. when we have differences, but it seems to me this is the place where we work out differences. An observation, I'm just always just seeking clarity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Any other comments?
Franklin, this is Jenna. I just wanted to also remind the group that, I think it was your last meeting, you did vote to have the chair submit a letter in writing in support of the Aging Readiness Plan. So that is being shared with the Planning Commission as written testimony. So if that's helpful, feel free, like if you'd like to show up and fight testimony, you can say something like, "I support the letter." The commission on aging submit, you know, you don't need to go into detail. You can just endorse something someone said or has already been submitted. Yeah, that's totally fine.
Who besides myself is planning to be at the Planning Commission meeting tomorrow?
Cass, this is Cass. I will be there.
And I saw, Ken, your hand? Okay. So it'll be the three of us. Anyone else is welcome to attend, even if they don't want to speak, so.
I'd love to, but tomorrow's the Building Excellence Awards, so, Ken.
Okay, unless there's any more comments on that particular item? Do we have anyone online to make any public comments?
So Franklin, I think for this item, this is if Susan and I have received any public comments since your last meeting that we need to share with all of you. So we'll get to the actual public comments at the next meeting, if that makes sense.
Okay, yes, thank you.
And I think Susan had one, we've had one item we wanted to share that's come in in the last month.
So we just wanted to share with you that we did receive an email from Catherine McCoy, who is a planner with the Department of Commerce, for the Washington State Department of Commerce. And we sent the Department of Commerce a copy of the draft Aging Readiness Plan. And she was very pleased that we had sent the copy and gave the commission and the consultant and staff kudos for the plan and the breadth of the plan and the fact that we're working on aging issues. So we just wanted to let you know that we received that comment.
Thank you, Susan. Let's move on to other updates.
Okay, I think I'm up first. I just wanted to review some upcoming meetings and events that are happening before your next meeting. So we have a presentation to the Vancouver City Council next Monday, August 21st. So staff will be attending with Larry and Ken, I think if you're still interested in shadowing, so that's coming up. We do have a time change. I will follow up with both of you. They moved it earlier to when we were previously scheduled.
Jenna, is that presentation, are you leading that presentation? You're likely have done it before?
Yeah, I have an email that I have not pressed send on yet.
Oh, okay.
An email coming your way, Larry, so we can coordinate.
Okay, that's what I want to do.
Yeah, okay. Let's see. And then those of you who are on the Silver Citizen Award Subcommittee, we are scheduled to meet on August 31st. So you'll come to that meeting. We will have printed all of the nominations received. You'll have a chance to review them and then deliberate and decide who you want to recommend to receive the award at that meeting. And then for those of you who are on the Subcommittee to help fill the, make a recommendation on filling the vacant seat for the commission, your first meeting is August 24th to review applications and then you'll be doing interviews on August 29th. Okay, so that's what we've got scheduled out so far.
Ken, with regard to the Senior Citizen Award, is there a framework that you'll give us in terms of how we evaluate it or is it less formal than that?
I'm trying to remember. We do have, we have a template that has the criteria that are outlined in the, essentially the how to apply or nominate someone for the award. So we'll share that with you all to help you with your review, to make your notes and considerations. So, but it's up to you, you know, if you want to formally score them or not, or just use that as a guide in your discussion.
Also, 10:00 a.m. here for that August 31st meeting?
Yes, in this building. I think we're in the room next door, if I remember correctly, but I'll, I will remind you all beforehand and double check that.
10:00 a.m.?
Yes.
Do we have anyone representing the ITE Conference and the presentation made by Chuck Green?
This is Susan. I got an email from Chuck to outline that he had a successful poster presentation for the Aging Readiness Plan. He had about 25 to 30 people that stopped by and talked to him about the plan. And ITE is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So the item that there was maybe the most interest in was Ridgefield's Golf Cart Zone and use of golf carts in their downtown area. And the presentation was only supposed to be an hour and a half long, but it actually got extended to two hours because he had so many people stopping by. So it sounds like he was pretty excited with the outcome.
Great, thank you, Susan. Any, oh, you have a comment mail? Oh, sorry. Are there any liaison reports?
This is Justin. I took a lot of notes today, whole page full of them. There was a lot of information there. I don't know if, how many, some of the newer members, I'm sure, don't know a whole lot about Adsoa. I didn't either when I went in today, but they're, they do a lot. They are a very, very active organization. Had an opportunity to meet their advisory board and the executive director, all the participants in that. It was a hybrid meeting, so some people were virtual. Highlights, and I guess I would, could touch on some of those things and try to be brief. I could go on for an hour like they did. Biggest thing, I guess, I would take away from it was that Mike Riordan, who is their executive director, you know, he gave the state level directors report on, he met with, you know, these things go on at different levels. You got your, you know, community level and then you've got your state level and national level in regards to a lot of these issues. One thing he pointed out was that there is, you know, they're really seeing it at the larger level as the caregiver workforce shortage, that there's just a massive shortage of caregivers out there and ways they're going to try to solve and fix that. Saying that in the state programs in particular, and the people that are primarily getting funded by Medicare, Medicaid, and the lower income people are having a very, very long wait time to get state-provided in-home care. So these people are just floundering out there. Solutions, the one solution which I found very interesting is that they're, they're looking at the CTE program and I guess they have already got quite a bit of infrastructure in place, which is your career and technical education programs within the schools. And they're trying to get the high school students essentially, like we kind of had mentioned before, that might be a good idea to try to get the younger populations engaged to where they can take a 90-hour course through the high school and then be, get a certification to be an in-home healthcare person right out the gate and kind of try to bridge them into maybe wanting to continue further on that career path. So that's something that's being looked at from the state level. And so we might see that in the education system, which could help with some of the issues that we're seeing. What other things? Other things he touched on were the opportunities for the aging, aging commissions to contract with managed care organizations so they could provide care coordination services, because that's a big stick in the process, is that people come in, they present issues, but there's nobody there to help them get from here to care. So they're trying to allow for the medical, you know, the insurance companies and Medicaid or Kaiser, whoever else, to compensate them for the, providing those services because those organizations don't have enough of their own resources to be able to do it competently. And then touching again on the homeless growing, the growing of the homeless population essentially, you know, throughout the state and beyond, just how, you know, the reasons and the causes for that that they're trying to ask them the question, why is this happening? And most of them are rent increases, you know, mobile home parks being purchased and the space rents being increased and pricing these people out and, you know, the cost of food and the other things that we're seeing due to inflation. So, and then they had a presenter as well that was from the Department of Hearing and Heart of Hearing, Deaf and Heart of Hearing is the ODHH, Organization for Deaf and Heart of Hearing. Lady Maggie Campbell presented and her main focus was really kind of just creating awareness about how one in four people is going to be deaf or hard of hearing by 2050. And they've got a whole slew of different technology available out there to help and assist people that are deaf or hard of hearing. And her presentation was probably 20, 30 minutes. And a lot of good takeaways from that meeting in its entirety. And they had weigh-ins from different places. Waukeaham County's got a lot of stuff going on there because they have the, in our state, they have the oldest population of senior citizens in the state apparently there, per capita, so.
Who was that, Justin?
That's Waukeaham County. Waukeaham, however you say it, yeah, it's a word. Yeah, they had a prom there recently for the seniors. I guess a senior prom thing that they were boasting about, just an act, different activities. They're very active there and they're also putting together a, like a Meals on Wheels. Actually, that's not true. That's, that's locally here in Clark County. Greg Flack has reported on how in Clark County that the food pantry demand is up, you know, twofold. Mostly, you know, 50% of the people going there are seniors and they've got a, somebody donated a mobile food truck that they're actually going to start, not like a food cart, but like a truck so they can take meals to, right now they're serving the four senior living centers, the low-income ones, four targeted low-income seniors to bring them food so they don't have to make a way to get to them. So good things that are happening at least. So I look forward to going to more of these meetings and hopefully bringing back some good feedback of stuff that's actually actioned and in place and that they're.
Justin, may I, this is Ken, may I make one comment with regard to one of the programs you mentioned? You know, when you were talking about care management? It's another good example of where we can plug a hole because while they're looking for care managers, there isn't a managed care company, a larger healthcare organization, an insurance company, or a state agency that doesn't have an army of certified senior advisors slash social workers slash case managers specifically for that, but people don't always know how to find them. So in that case, it's not a shortage of resources, it's a lack of understanding of access. And those services are, the cost is zero for the, for the person that needs it.
Thank you, Ken. Any thoughts on how to create a broader sense of awareness on accessing those services?
You know, one of the things that strikes me is that there's such an incredible opportunity, I think, that if we had, if I had a cut sheet or a one-page thing that said, "These are the 10 top resource issues that senior have, seniors have," and I'm using me as an example, but if we found a way to propagate that or expand on that, and so, and if I said, "You know what, 10 times a month, I'm going to go on a scheduled basis to a retirement community or a community center or a senior center or pick your label and your group, and I'm personally going to do 10 20-minute presentations or 30-minute presentations with Q and A to discuss that list." First of all, having run them, seniors love people coming in and talking to them about anything, let alone valuable information. And Larry, you know, you live in a facility like that, when somebody's got that kind of information, people are incredibly welcoming of that. But the fact that they don't know that it necessarily exists or the depth to it exists, and an example is when I was at the last Planning Commission meeting, is that what that was? One of the board members came up to me afterwards and said, "I'm going through this with my parents, I don't know how to process that." And so we spent a half hour talking about it. I referred him to somebody else, problem solved, right? But he didn't know where to go to, even though there wasn't a cost for that service. So it's knowledge and knowledge is through access. I think we can create a platform through the existing plan without changing anything to facilitate access through communication.
And thank you for that comment. Is that an idea worth pursuing from the standpoint of maybe appointing a Subcommittee to look at that in more depth?
That's how it works, Ken.
You know, maybe before we go there, if you're comfortable with the idea, maybe I would be willing to, just on my own time, go to four or five retirement communities that are all within 1,000 feet of my freaking front door, because I know all of them, and say, "Hey, would you guys be willing to allow me or us to do a quick presentation, allow Q and A, see what kind of feedback we get and if they think it's valuable?" Before we commit time and resources to it. We'd probably hit 500 or 600 people in that process. It's not a bad sample size.
Thank you. Any comments on that?
Yeah, I think, Larry, I think it's a good thought. I think that what Kent brought up is excellent. But, you know, it's going to take some effort to do it.
To get that one-page sheet can be a bigger issue. Communicating, it's easy, but coming up with a single resource that you can communicate about.
This is Jenna. I was going to say, I might recommend holding that thought for your next meeting because having prepped a bit with Cass and Franklin, I think there's a possibility it might be able to fit with what you all do over the next few months. So that's just a process suggestion.
Thank you, Jenna. It's getting kind of late. Are there any more liaison reports?
I just have one comment because Justin brought it up. I work at the food pantry down on 906 Arnie. It's right down here. The numbers have doubled from last year. We have a food pantry truck that was just purchased, so we have deliveries now that can go out on a Friday. We're asking for additional volunteers. The food pantry down there has doubled in side, size. LSW used to occupy a portion of that. They have moved out, so we're doubling the size of that food pantry. But if you go down there, you'll see the lines. We do lunch. Folks can come up to the lunch counter, get lunch and so forth. Those numbers have doubled too. The most significant thing that I have observed and others have observed is the number of females that are homeless, out on the streets, that come and get lunch and so forth, that those numbers we've seen increase for a variety of different reasons. All the other pantries, Salvation Army, Clark College has a food pantry, the Veterans Resource Center has a food pantry, they're all overloaded. And, you know, it's even cost you somewhat to drive there because you're paying $5 for a gallon of gasoline right now just to get there and get the food and so forth. So the numbers have doubled. Fortunately, we've been able to keep up with the volunteers there. I know Meals on Wheels likewise is getting a lot of requests. So food is a challenge and will continue to be a challenge in our community till we learn how to deal with it a little bit better.
Thank you, Larry. Does anybody have anything else? Susan?
Yes, I just very quickly was able to try to respond to Ken's question about the one support letter that we received. The applicant in this case was required to have a neighborhood meeting. At that neighborhood meeting, it appears, again, looking very quickly, that it was At that neighborhood meeting, it appears, again, looking very quickly, that it was mostly a question and answer session where they discussed the proposal and then the people who attended asked specific questions about the proposal. But the examiner decision does say that Malata Allen, representing the Falida Neighborhood Association, appeared in a neutral capacity and testified generally in support of the project in the location. And there were dissenting views from a couple other attendees, two other attendees of the hearing.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.